I open the nominations for position of vice chairman. Are there any nominations? I'd like to nominate Joey Ralph.
Second.
Any other nominations?
No.
Nomination's closed. The vote?
Aye.
Marty Solz?
Aye.
Joey Ralph?
Yes.
Chris Van De Beesen?
Yes.
Arzillo?
Yes.
Welcome, your vice chairman. Do you want to speak?
Now, just thank you, everyone. We're, hopefully, we can push Jasper County into a forward position, making sure that we answer things for the people of the public, making sure that they're well represented, and making sure that we can do the best for the people. So, reach out. The council is elected for a reason, and we're here to hear you. So, let us know what we can do for you.
Mike? Okay, I have to have a motion. Excuse me, I have a discussion on the agenda. Is there any discussion? No discussion? Could I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Yes.
We had previously talked about perhaps deferring one of the items. One of the resolutions.
Resolution for 12.
Number 12.
Number 12. Like to table that? Or? Like to amend the motion to approve the agenda with 12A, or 12 taking off earlier today.
Like to make the motion to approve the agenda with removing item number 12, special services contract, from this agenda.
Okay, I'd like to have, any comment? No comment? Could I have a vote? All in favor, say yes. Anybody say no?
Thank you.
Motion approved. We have proclamations. Ms. Park has not shown up, or is not here for some reason, so we will postpone until she can make it here, so we can give her the proclamation. Second proclamation will be Jasper County Clerk of the Court. Margaret Bostick. Would you please come forward? Excuse me, I got lost. Sorry about that.
It's all right.
Brand new, you know? I'd like that whole council come up, please. Thirty years deserves. Thirty years? More?
Thirty-six.
Deserves the whole council. You know, Ms. Bostick? I was here, I went to church at Beth El when you announced this, and I saw a beaming light come from your face when you wanted it. I think you deserve this. But anyway, please come forward here. Proclamation. Whereas Jasper County Council would like to recognize Jasper County Department of Court Margaret Bostick. Whereas Margaret Bostick has served in the position of Jasper County Clerk for its 36 years while providing diligent service to the Jasper County. And whereas Margaret Bostick was the first African-American woman to serve in the clerk of the court position, as well as one of the only three in the state of South Carolina. Whereas Margaret Bostick has been devoted as an elected official into the position where she was elected by the people of Jasper County. And whereas Margaret Bostick was elected by the people of Jasper County Conservant as an elected official under title of Jasper County Clerk of the Court from January 1st, 1989, until December 31st, 2024. Whereas in recognition of Margaret Bostick's dedication to Jasper County and the citizens of Jasper County and many other entities she has been involved in, now their effort be resolved and proclaim that Jasper County in recognition of these contributions to Jasper County will be known this day, sixth day, January 2025, as proclamation has been adopted by Jasper County Council duly sent. Congratulations.
Thirty-six years, yes. I've enjoyed it. I've rejoiced in it and I'm proud of it. It's been a, on my radar, it's been, it's been my, it's been my baby for 36 years. So, it's a little hard giving it up. So many people are here that I've worked with, Dr. Carroll. I, it's just, it's easy in a way, it's hard. I'm just waiting for 501 came to date, I'm like, I don't know what I'm going to do, but it'll be all right. It will be all right, I'm gonna make it all right. When I signed, took the first oath in January of 1989, Judge Luke Brown swore me in. In fact, he was wondering if it's waiting me to pursue and run as clerk of the court. Then it was a whole football game. We might have had six weeks of court out the whole year. We've got court every week now. But I do, I thank the citizens of Jasper County for allowing me to serve for 36 years. I have surely enjoyed it. Thank you.
The next on the agenda is Mark May, or Arthur? Monica?
While we're getting this ready, why don't we have Mr. Jennings come forward, please. Mr. Jennings is with Senator Tim Scott's office. He has a little presentation he can make to Arthur.
I'd like to say I just got off the airplane with Governor Washington. Mr. Arthur Benjamin, at the request of the Honorable U.S. Senator Tim Scott, the architect of the capitals, this flag was flown over the United States Capitol for Mr. Arthur Benjamin in celebration of your retirement as Director of Jasper County Detention Center. Ms. Bostick, I say a word. I did not know, when I hear with you, I'd like to bring you a presentation that you will be running this time, and I did not get the right information. All right, I'll speak.
Whereas the Jasper County Council would like to recognize Arthur S. Benjamin Jr., Director of the Jasper County Detention Center for his service. Whereas Arthur S. Benjamin Jr. has served in the position Jasper County Detention Center Director 25 years, as of December 31st, 2024, providing diligent service to Jasper County. And whereas Arthur S. Benjamin Jr. has dedicated his time, his compassion, his ethical leadership to Jasper County Government and to Jasper County. And whereas Arthur S. Benjamin Jr. has been devoted to Jasper County as both as a committee and as a Director of Jasper County Detention Center for the people of Jasper County. And whereas Arthur S. Benjamin Jr. has served efficiently and effectively as a leader and director of Jasper County Detention Center from May 31st, 2000, until December 31st, 2024. And whereas in recognition of Arthur S. Benjamin Jr.'s huge dedication to Jasper County Government, Jasper County, and the citizens of Jasper County, now therefore be resolved and proclaimed the Jasper County Council in recognition of these contributions to Jasper County will be known the sixth day of January 2025.
Senator Margaret Bostick said, oh, this is my baby, had a great staff, a great boss. There was times, there were some good times and some bad times, but he stuck on me, he let me. He wanted to put someone's best in his business. And I thank colleagues, beautiful county detention director, my husband, and Robson, Mr. Jacobs, a lot of my colleagues here. I call him Love Gibson, Russell, and I call him Ken, everyone, I thank, everyone. And I thank the judges. One of the biggest things that I was able to do is did work with the judges. We had a great team. I know they're gonna be calling me with some ideas, and I thank the citizens of Jasper County, because Jasper's been very good to me and my family. And I thank them all. Some of my children are here, helped them get through to college and everything, out the house and everything. And my friends, so I thank y'all, and I appreciate it.
Right, he would be handed, right, was it right? Where was it? He still, those words of wisdom will still come out.
Well, I was worried about that.
He's still gonna do your words of wisdom.
Right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, what's the next on the list? I have a resolution here. Item 10. Consideration of Resolution 2025-01 relating to the business and license of peddlers and hawkers. And I would like to remove Exhibit A, which was put on there in error. Do I have a discussion? This is a yearly ordinance that we have to pass by state law. Motion? No move. Second?
I'll second.
Any comment? Everybody in favor, say aye, raise your hand. Any no's? Pass. The second, number 11, Andy Fogrom, please forward.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, this resolution authorizes the hiring of Low Country Council of Governments for grant administration for a grant that we're hopeful we will receive from the EPA that we made application for just a couple of weeks ago. And it calls for the construction of sanitary sewer in the Levy area. There is an agreement here between, a proposed agreement between the county and the Low Country Council of Governments. Talks about their services to include grant compliance should we be successful in receiving the grant. Respectfully, we request your consideration this evening.
Any discussion? Motion? To approve or disapprove?
Make a motion that we approve Resolution 2025-02, special service contract with Low Cog.
Second?
Second.
Any comment? Vote? Anyone in favor, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Any negatives? Pass. Number 12. In consideration of Resolution R-2025-03 for special service contract with Heather Rath Consulting.
Mr. Chairman, this is the one we deferred.
Right, we would defer it. We're gonna defer that until the end of January, when we have a conference. Any questions? Lisa Wagner? You're up next.
Good evening, Chairman and council members.
Oh, 12A.
Yeah.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. 12A, I have the old. 12A, discussion and consideration for proposed Resolution R-2025-04, amending Resolution R-2024-6. I want to table that until Friday, we're gonna have a workshop on this. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Pass. Sorry about that, being ahead of myself. 13.
This is a request for a zoning map amendment to have a property designated as residential. The subject property consists of three acres and is located along Floyd Road near the Tillman area. The property is currently zoned rural preservation. The purpose for the rezoning is to have the subject property zoned as the same as the adjacent property, which is zoned residential. And intent is to combine the properties without creating a parcel land that would be split zone. The 2018 Jasper County Comprehensive Plan's Future Land Use Map identifies this area as rural conservation. The rural conservation areas seek to protect and promote the character of Jasper County that largely exists today outside of the municipalities. The adjacent parcels are zoned rural preservation and residential. Adjacent land uses are residential and vacant property. The property is accessed by Floyd Road, which is a two-lane state-maintained highway classified as a local road. The Planning Commission recommends approval of the request to have the property designated as residential on the Jasper County official zoning map. Notices were sent to property owners located within 500 feet of the parcel. A public hearing notice was posted in the paper, and the property was posted with a public hearing sign. We didn't receive any comments in the planning department.
This is a public hearing? Does anybody would like to discuss this or talk to us about this? Get up. Yes, get up. State your name. Come to the podium, state your name, and look in your address.
Good evening, thank y'all for listening to me, I hope. My name's A.T. Fletcher, I've been a resident of the county for 22 years. I've spent 47 of my last years with every minute I could over here enjoying the rural area. Every time I see one of these zoning laws, I cringe, because as soon as it's rezoned, what I see happens in the next few months is shocking. Plenty of examples in the Ridgeland, Tillman, Graves area. I don't have to name any places, I think all of y'all have seen them. I talked to Chris today, he answered the phone, the second ring which impressed me. Anyway, and I've talked to John several times in our favorite meeting place, the Waffle House in Ridgeland. But anyway, we've discussed my concerns and their concerns, and what kind of, what can we do about what's happening, what I'm talking about, about me being more specific? Chris and I went into detail over the phone, and I don't want to air the dirty laundry right here in front of everyone, but I understand we only have one person that governs these rezonings when the development starts, is that correct? I'll ask you, John.
Excuse me, we don't talk, we just discuss, we don't answer questions.
Okay.
You can talk to Mr. Fogrom afterward.
Yes, sir. I mean, is there only one person following up on this?
We just take public comment.
Okay, aye. Aye. All of y'all, you're new councilmen, you made lots of promises. I hope you continue to keep our county beautiful and not let, continue what I see is happening in lots of places. I live on Floyd Road, it started on one side of me, then it started on the other side of me, and now it's again, and it's very alarming what's happened. I'm not concerned about property values, I'm more, I'm more concerned about the visual impact on our county.
Thank you. A few thoughts to Mr. Fogrom, he will be able to help you. Is there anybody else? Calling once? Calling twice? Please state your name and.
I'm Sean Bentley, and I am a resident of, you know, down at Delta Hill Road. Now, a lot of people asking me, and I'm asking myself also, what kind of impact will this do to the residents even in Jasper County? You know, we have forced the road traffic and so forth down there, is that gonna be an impact? Is that gonna put a burden on that? Could we have a problem with that now?
I think he's speaking of Bellinger Hill.
Yes.
This is Floyd Road that's different.
This is different.
We're gonna get the Bellinger Hill map.
Okay. Yes, sir. Oh, she's there now?
Are we ready? Okay.
If I just may point out, on the map here, you're looking at, you see the residential was brown and the rural preservation. It has the hash lines through it, so this property that's been asked for a rezoning, that's three acres, it's outlined in blue. And the property owner who is deceased, she also owns the two acres right beside it, that's zoned residential. The intent really for this is for the four girls, her four daughters, to just be able to sub, combine the properties, be able to each one subdivide it in four parcels. So, with the rural, with the split zone, and it makes it almost impossible, but if it were residential, they would have what they need to meet those minimum lots, which is 100 feet. So, that's the intent here, it's not really intended for any type of development. Don't know if that helps, but it was the intent of the rural preservation zoning district was for 25 acres and greater, it's the larger land, and this is three acres and doesn't really qualify as the rural preservation. And you can see all the larger properties around it that they're just, you can tell by the map that they're just larger properties that are zoned rural preservation.
We're still in public comment, is there any public comment? Going once? Going twice? Three times? Public comment is stopped. Do we have any discussion on this? Yes, question?
Is the property, the reason that we're applying for the rezoning is for the four daughters to be able to build a house? Is that what you?
That's possible, I just know at this time, it could equally be divided into four. That falls in line with the minor subdivision. They would all have, there's enough room on the road frontage for them each to have the 100 foot width, but the rural preservation requires 200 feet. That really throws monkey wrench in it, because you have five acres, so each one would get an acre and a quarter.
So, they wouldn't be able to each have their own home, I guess, with 200 feet, is that that?
With the rural preservation, they're not able to.
That's what I.
Have the four lots.
Are there any other comments?
I do. This is contiguous to the lots that it touches, correct?
Yes.
With the highlighted, so if it gets rezoned, those parcels that are rural preservation that are kind of donut hole in between, how do we go with that?
So, these two properties here are what's being proposed to be put into one. That'd be a total five acres. The rural preservation surrounding it remains the same.
That's all I have. Any other discussion? I'd like to have a motion? To approve or disapprove?
Make a motion that we approve the second reading of Ordinance 2025-01 to amend the zoning map.
Second. Anybody have a comment? Like to have a vote? All in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Call against? Any motion? Pass. Ms. Lisa, you are up again, 14. Ordinance 2025-02.
This is a request for a planned development district zoning designation for a commercial project, and if approved, it will be known as Daily Organics PDD. Included with the zoning map amendment application is a contract plan and PDD standards. The project site consists of 223.7 acres located along Bellinger Hill Road with frontage on Bellinger Hill Run. The property is currently zoned rural preservation and is developed as an existing farm, which includes an organic composting and mulching operation. The applicant proposes to add a bagging facility, which will require an industrial zoning designation or a PDD that will allow this type of land use. The PDD regulations are intended to encourage flexibility in the development of land, to promote its most appropriate use, to do so in a manner that will enhance public health, safety morals, and general welfare. The PDD regulations are intended to accomplish the purposes of and in other applicable regulations to an equivalent or higher degree, and are designed to control unscheduled development on individual lots or tracts. Promote economical and efficient land use, provide an improved level of amenities, foster a harmonious variety of uses, encourage creative design, and produce a better environment. The county's Comprehensive Plan's Future Land Use Map identifies this area as rural transition. The rural transition areas are located in southern Jasper County, and will likely be under pressure to develop within the foreseeable future. Development proposals in existing communities such as Levy Limehouse should be respectful and complement the scale and character of the area. The adjacent zoning, ooh. Oh, I didn't think about that. The adjacent parcel to the north is zoned residential, the existing use is residential. The property to the south is zoned resource extraction, and there's a mining operation there. To the west, the property is zoned residential and PDD, and those uses are residential and vacant property. And to the east, the property is zoned residential, rural preservation, and resource extraction, and the use of that property is residential, small campground, and a mining operation. The property is accessed by Bellinger Hill Road and Bellinger Hill Run. Bellinger Hill Road is a two-lane state-maintained road classified as a limited local road, which really is the primary access, although there is frontage along Bellinger Hill Road, it's a private dirt road. The Planning Commission, so if you'd like, I'll go over to access points and allow land use, if I know you can read that, and we went over that last time. This is properly been noticed, and letters sent to the property owners, signed, placed on the property, and, but I would point out that the. on the property, and, but I would point out that the planning commission, their recommendation of, they did recommend approval of the PDD designation and the concept map, but they also recommend that the PDD standards limit the uses to only allow commercial and industrial uses that support the daily organic farm, including the existing composting and mulching operation and the proposed bagging facility.
This is a public comment?
This is a public here.
Anybody would like to talk about this? That is. Come on up, please. Please, address, name and number, uh, name and locate, address.
Herman West, 620 Bellinger Hill Road. My, the biggest concern right now is the traffic that's going to be involved. Will we be bagging 40-foot containers, 20-foot containers, you know, what's the status right there? Because the road is small anyway. But I'm thinking about feet down of that road, you know, with those trucks coming in. Right now, talking to stuff in the small, you know, people coming in in vans and trailers and stuff like that. Now, the biggest thing right now, we want to know is, what size vehicles are we going to be using in this facility? Then, we're also thinking about the noise that's just generated. Right now, with the grinding, I can hear the grinding right now, I'm about a mile from there right now, and I can hear the grinding of the material at all times. And we don't want that shop that we had when we first opened up, they brought in, I think it was Jurea, and believe me, we all thought during that process that it was something dead down there for about six weeks. We had a very serious order, and that's taken care of now. But the biggest thing right now is the volume and the size of trucks that's going to be coming in and out there. That's going to be one of the major, major problems right now, because like I said, we don't know what's the status, will we be building a warehouse back there, the baggage, you know, the machines, the material, you know, all of this back here, so we'd like to know.
How close are you to that again?
Maybe three fourth of the amount.
Thank you. Is there any, thank you very much, we appreciate it, we'll take it into consideration. Is there anybody else that would like to talk?
Good evening, my name is Willie Mae Harrington, and I live on Bellinger Hill Road. And it's bad enough now with the pit, the sand pit they've put there, the big trucks coming in and out of the roads. I don't approve of that, because you're putting things there, they barely want to fix the road. Every time the wind gets high, the trees fall in, and we can't even go home. What about the industrial, the whatever this plant is bringing? That's a small little community. And I think you should have let people know that live down this area before we come to a meeting what was going on, and get our opinion of how, of what. The traffic is already bad because of the big truck coming out of the sand pit. So what are we going to do about that? It's a two-lane road, and the road is all chipped up already. I don't approve of it, and I don't think anybody living down Bellinger Hill should approve of it. And it's enough that some of us here.
Thank you very much, we'll take it into consideration. Is there anybody else?
Once again, I'm Nancy Ward Bentley, and I'm going to take it back to what she just said. I've been down there for, I've been down there about a while now, but I came back, it's been like 40 years now. You know, we can't get anything done down there where it is now, we've had, I've seen two people almost lost their lives, well, the grace of God, they survived, because, but, but the trees that hang on the road, I've been trying to get them removed, but they don't do, or something happened, we got to do it ourselves, some of that people there. But another thing, what impact would all this have on people that have paid tax on their land in that area? You know, would it, would it score a decrease, or have a problem with their land around that area? You know, what happens? You know, like you said, she said, no one knew what was going on, we just saw that science about rezoning, we didn't, we didn't know what it was about, they want to say, you know, voice our opinion, yes and they, yeah, no. But anyway, I don't think that, you know, would be a good idea for the residents of Bellinger Hill, for their school kids going to school, the school bus and so forth, and I think it's bad now, if we don't have that, that here.
I thank you very much, take it into consideration. Is there anyone else?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the council, my name is Ron Scott, we represent the developers, Madison and James Daly, Daily Organics, they've been here before, the council before, and we believe that this particular project, as has been explained to the council and endorsed by the planning commission with certain additional restrictions that Mr. Wagner shared, and that both Mr. Daleys are certainly open to accommodate. We appreciate and certainly respect the traffic concerns, much of which relates to other development in the area that wouldn't be created by what's being proposed here. This is really about the opportunity to bag certain mulch that's being created on site and the permitting that goes along with that. I do believe a meeting was planned for December, and James and Madison Daly were and still are happy to attend, and for whatever reason, the meeting had to be canceled, I don't think related to this, but they remain available. They are on their way here, had a work incident that was very unfortunate, and detained them, but they are here. But I want to share with those present, we're happy to have conversations after the meeting or schedule an opportunity to answer any further questions that may be asked, that want to be good citizens, good neighbors, and certainly care about the community. But we appreciate the opportunity to share that feedback, but they are on the way, and if you want to share with anyone here who's in there and has any questions, they're happy to talk and answer those as may be asked, but appreciate the opportunity to share feedback with them, thank you for your consideration.
Is there anyone else?
One comment I heard him say about the community, he knows nothing about the community. It's a quiet area until you start on the, whatever they're doing back there. Whatever they're doing, you can get a stall, milk, or whatever. So it is, it's bad for our environment, but if you're trying to bring a business, it's good for you. I don't think it's right to come into our area.
Thank you. And finally, you've tried three or four times.
Christian Wazaleski, I live on, down the dirt road on Bellinger Hill Run. So my questions would be, what's the impact to that dirt road? I'm just curious if there's any access points to the new facility, and if there's a map of where the new facility would be? I would just be curious if it's, you know, something I would have to see every day, or if our residents would have to see every day and hear the noise of it. I am a big fan of expanding small businesses, I'm starting one myself, but I do hope that there is a benefit to expanding a business if it could benefit the community. If there's some way that we can expand the road or have road management, maybe there is a benefit for the community that can help both parties, so I'm just putting that up there. Those are my questions.
Thank you very much. Mr. Fulgham, would you just provide for maps, or a way to get to see the maps? Has anybody else would like to speak? Yes?
Good evening, Quincy Bentley, I live in the Levy area, and I think, like a lot of them say, this doesn't just impact Bellinger Hill, if you live in that Levy area, the Levy Road with the new warehouses that, that went up, that road has absolutely destroyed a lot of the roads in that Levy community, and there's absolutely no funding and no work going on in that Levy area with the roads. So I spoke to Mr. Daly, and I know that what they want to do is be able to bag where they can sell to individuals, that's going to increase the traffic down there. So not only do you have the big trucks, now you have, you know, residents, local residents, and going through there. So with the current condition of the roads and the big trucks, and now you increase the traffic, coming out of Bellinger Hill, that road, that's like a death trap right there on that, on that curve, there are a lot of accidents that's occurring right there. So now you increasing traffic in there, with the road conditions, there's no sign there, there's no lights there, there's no anything, and then if you go on 315, trying to get in and out of 315 on a certain time of the day, good luck. So now you're increasing that traffic in there, with the, with the, with the way that traffic conditions are already, yeah, it's, I understand what he's trying to do, but it's, it's a disaster waiting to happen. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else that, I think somebody else would like to talk? Thank you. Come on up. Name and location.
Good evening, my name is Vera Hayward, and I live on the Bellinger Hill Road, and my concern is traffic also. My daughter and I, we have a daycare right next to the Bellinger Hill Run. When we got there seven years ago, traffic was much different than it is now. I'm afraid for our clients who come in and out, I'm afraid for our lives and the school bus on that highway. My grandchildren go to school, get off at the daycare. We have to make sure that we are out there to monitor this traffic. That is a dead-end road. That dead-end road is not suitable for that amount of traffic that this project is talking about bringing to our local area. So I just want to say to the board tonight, take this into consideration, that we in the community, it's not a goal for us, not to increase in the traffic that they have now, something has to be done about that. I think the speed limit says 45, they're doing much more, a higher speed than 45 on that highway. So it's like, we're not going to sit by and allow something to come into our community that could cause harm to us, who've lived there all of our lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
I'd just provide one point of clarification, studies of traffic, I can hear the comment being that additional traffic.
Can I, just, you've done your public comment.
Yes.
There's going to be discussion.
Okay.
I'm going to bring you up anyway.
Okay. All right.
Is there anybody else for public comment? Going once? Going twice? Three times? End of public comment. Is there any discussion?
Well, I've got a question here about the, so it looks like 166 acres are going to remain rural preservation, and they're going to do 36 acres designated as general commercial, 21 acres to designated industrial, is that correct? Is that what?
That's correct.
Yeah. What, what is the noise? Is this, is this a big noise issue for the residents around there?
Not that I'm aware of. That might, I wish the Daleys were here to talk to you, they already have the composting and mulching going on, but what they're proposing is, they want to do a bagging facility where they bag the compost and the mulch and be able to sell it.
Is this like a five-day-a-week thing, eight hours a day?
Yes. So right now, according to the engineer who's been working with them to prepare the PDD, they stated that there is approximately 30 trucks a day currently, that includes their customers, and 10 cars a day, which includes their employees, and that the future condition is predicted to produce 10 additional trucks a day, and 10 additional cars a day. So basically.
60 total.
20 vehicle trucks.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, my concern would be the, the noise issue, I know, you know.
So there will also, this is a PDD, and then there's the next items, a development agreement.
Right.
And in the development agreement, the county council can regulate some additional things as far as noise and other things. Whatever you feel is needed to protect the community.
Right.
That could be addressed in the development agreement.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Lisa, do you know about how long this operation, Daly, has been in operation at that location?
How long they've been in operation? Probably seven years, I'm guessing, give or take, I think that's probably pretty close.
And you may not be able to answer this, but I'm going to assume that they're mulching, tub grinding, and then bringing it out in bulk, and now they want to color it, bag it, and sell it.
So they currently operate under a de-hack permit now, and in order for them to expand, to have this bagging facility, they need to change their de-hack license, which would require some type of industrial zoning. The staff here at Jasper County thought that it would be better to work with them for a PDD where it could be regulated, rather than applying for an industrial zoning. An industrial zoning doesn't fit in there, so under the planned development district, they could have that, and we were able to stand behind it and support it because they show in their concept map that out of all the acres they have, they're going to keep 166 acres to remain rural preservation, an agricultural type of zoning designation.
And I guess my point is, and I'll find out more.
Sure.
That the volume coming in and out is going to be the same, it's just going to be bagged so they can sell it at a higher profit by the bag versus a truckload.
So as far as the volume, they're predicting 10 more additional trucks a day than what's currently there, and 10 more cars a day. So a total trip, 20 vehicle trips.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Yes, and the, excuse me, the original submitted to the planning commission, did they discuss what the noise would be? I did watch it, but I cannot remember that. And if there's any noise generated from the bagging, also, the hours of operation, did they state what the hours of operation would be for there?
That's not stated, I, I do feel, and I might be wrong, it could be stated in a development agreement?
Yes.
We did it with the map.
The agenda's item 15, which is a development agreement, which provides an opportunity to provide further restrictions on operation. From my notes from last time as we moved through this, I'm about to be jumping ahead, but the rest of the community meeting, that we're going to discuss some of these issues that y'all are discussing now with the community to see if they can have a resolution, as Mr. Scott said, that meeting is canceled, so we haven't amended the development, as you originally saw. My notes said we wanted to discuss about the traffic mitigation necessary down there, potential noise restrictions, restricting the uses, further in there, we all discussed as the planning commission recommended, looking at development fees for infrastructure costs that might be necessitated, and the hours of operations can be restricted so that you can address the more physical aspects of what's going on based on the information they did there. From my recollection from some of the initial meetings with the Daleys, they have an existing operation, I think it's in Matt Pleasant, which is a growing community, lots of residents and things like that, which is an example that can be looked at to see what is the actual noise exposure to the citizens out there so that can be a quantitative evaluation of it. We haven't got there yet, because this is only first reading, when we go to the next one, it's a public hearing only that we announced in the first reading, it's going to be another public hearing, which we'll announce after that, which could have second reading, so we're at least a month and a half away. So we're at least a month and a half away from getting to a point there. But all of these are very good questions that need to be answered, a little bit more clear, I'm sorry, the Dalys aren't here yet, to be able to answer specifically about the noise. We do have another jurisdiction we can look to in Mount Pleasant to say, okay, what's, what's happened with the siding of the plant that you have up there, compare, do a comparative sizing and the hours of operation to see how that works. That's what I know, but as far as the development goes, yes, you can restrict things in there consensually, they would remain in place for the length of the development agreement, this was a ten-year development agreement. It also prevents the rezoning without your permission of any other property that's included in the development, which is the entire, those two-hundred-and-sixty-six acres.
Two-hundred-and-twenty-three.
Two-hundred-and-thirty-three acres, I can't remember.
Two-hundred-and-twenty-three.
Did Mr. Deller summarize basically the initial questions that you have on the development that we can work on before you bring back next time?
That'd be great.
Just one second. Can I have the, Mr. Scott? Excuse me, are you?
Lisa, do you have been?
Okay, I'm sorry.
It's all right.
Lisa?
Yes.
Excuse me, just.
He's already here, just.
Sure. I'm new. Okay. Would you work with our administrator and councilman Arzillo, since it's his location, to set up some of a meeting and do it quickly?
Yes, sir, in fact, I have to give him credit that that was their intent, to meet at the regular LEED meeting, but that got canceled, and so I just learned that today from you, and so that'll be the next step.
They're having a sixteenth, I think. There, there's a meeting on, I'm told that there's a meeting on the sixteenth, but I'm not sure.
I'm happy to coordinate that.
And we're having, just, just. But I would like to suggest that if it's possible, instead of having the meeting at the recreation center, is have it at the fire station down there on the Bellinger Hill Road. I don't know if, whether it's available or if we can do that, they've done it before, because that's where the Bellinger Hill people are.
Yes, sir, close.
And it's closer, and they can probably walk there or talk, you know, they're there. So that's my suggestion.
Sorry, anyone else here? I just ran here, guys, so I apologize. We had a work-related incident right when we were leaving Charleston, so I apologize for the tardiness, but we made it here. So we were watching it on the livestream, and where do we, where do we begin this question?
Well, I think, I think that what we do is to cut to the chase and have a meeting first of the people, that's what we have to hear.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, the council's kind of summarized their initial concerns, and so the next step, I think, is we can have a community meeting, the public community, and we go through those concerns so that we can report back to them about what progress we've made and what answers we have.
I do for the record, just want to clarify a couple of things that were stated. One point that was made is that this would open up, you know, a lot more cars and traffic individuals coming on the site. This is a wholesale operation, so that is, in fact, inaccurate, that would not be the case. The additional trucks with respect to wholesale operations would be the case, it's not a general sales site. The hours of operation that we're asking about are eight to five, but typically Monday through Friday, sometimes on Saturday as well. And herefore, I don't think either this, either Mr. Daley or Ms. Daley perceive noise complaints about their operation and just.
Never. Not once.
Back to the fact that this really came about, the discussions about bagging, what they are creating there on site, that's really what the impetus was for this.
Yeah.
The current operations and what they're doing is already a lot of this issue with this bagging and the big acre truss.
I think that's what the community needs to understand, is we're not trying to bring in something, we're already there, we've been existence for eight years, that own the property for forty. So we're a part of LEED community, and we aren't trying to bring in something large outside development, we're simply trying to use our land for what, you know, we can use it for and make money and have a business there. And we're not trying to bring in warehouses, we're not trying to bring in commercial development, we're simply trying to grow our business, and if anything, grow it on that little piece of land that we have, that's quite, you know, quite a valuable piece of property. We don't want to see it turn into warehouses either, we want to keep it the same. We love our land, and it's been our family for a long time. We have more land down the road that's sacred to us, our grandfather grew up at this property, he grew up, we grew up there, hunting with him, so we don't want to see this land developed. And as far as the traffic goes, what added that to the sand pit down the road was permanent before we were started, and it is actually now being, be ready to close down the day of mine. The traffic is going to reduce, whether or not they come in later and want to rezone or re-permanent for additional acres, that's up to the community, but we hope that the traffic count actually go down in this area. But in our idea, we're a farm, we're not a mining operation, we're not excavating dirt out of the ground, we're making our own dirt. We're taking a resource and beautifying our communities with this, and then offering to our customers who are retailers, and then sell it to the general public. Now, people in our area are more than welcome to come by our doors, always welcome to neighbors come in and get as much product as they like, because that's the benefit of living next to a company like ours. And our bagging warehouse is not going to be any warehouse that you see on Saturday on Route seventeen, you know, on Highway eighty or anything. This is shit. This, we're a farm, not just tomato shit.
With electric machines.
Well, the electric machine is going to be quiet, quiet, and we're going to have help from the area. We already employ people that live down the street, we're going to hire more people that live down the street to come work, drive this down the road, drive this, block this, cross this sand bridge, and come work and make good wages and have benefits.
Excuse me, I understand, but really, the, the important part is the people of Bellinger Hill.
Yeah.
And here is one thing, you have three or four people, and I'm sure there's going to be other, other people there. So I think that once you settle down there and you get the communication down there, you'll be better off. Communication's very important, and it looks like, you know, you canceled it, but there was no incident to, or way to start it up again. So I think you should start it up, see the R administrator, and deal with Councilman Arzillo, since this is his area again, and have a meeting, and we go from there. That's, I mean, it's just the way it is.
We'll do that.
Because we have concerns, we can work on it one way, and we can come back with the community and they'll be able to help. Is that okay?
We'll do that.
Yeah, thank you. Apologize for disturbing this.
Senator, we need to make a motion to table this until they have a meeting with the community before we go to second reading?
I believe that would be an appropriate motion, given the matters have been brought forward, and also give a chance for the second public hearing and the development, we're going to catch up together and start moving side by side, and it would give us an opportunity of any changes that come to the PDD to be done prior to second reading, rather than trying to do between second and third reading.
I'd like to have a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we table this until the community meeting has been done in Bellinger Hill.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All, any comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All against? Same motion? Fifteen is the ordinance to approve development agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, as we discussed in the prior matter, this is a companion ordinance that goes along with this, required to have two public hearings, those about one, and this is the first that we would have, there will be a second, it needs to be announced at this particular meeting when it's going to be, which I would suggest would either be, I don't know, the two weeks is going to give anyone enough time to get everything put together, whether you announce the second public hearing for the first meeting in February, which I don't have the calendar to tell you when that is, but that, you would, as you hear the public hearing, announce that there will be a public hearing at the first meeting in February.
I think it's February first, if I'm not mistaken.
That would be my recommendation for y'all to consider. But we do need to have the public hearing opportunity of folks to speak over the development agreement.
Do I have a motion? Or any comment? Do I have a motion?
Mr. Kim, we do have to open up. Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, I thought that was.
Do we have anybody for public comment?
Two comments, sir. Again, this is what we just commented on, and we, the citizen of Bellinger Hill do not want this project. And I, there's not, they have been told about.
Mr. Chairman, Madam Clerk, are you able to contribute those comments?
I didn't give the name.
That's Ms. Harry.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anybody else for public comment? Going once? Going twice? Going three times? End of public comment. Is there any discussion with the council?
Mr. Kim, yes, clear, no actions required of council tonight, other than announcing the second public hearing, which if I have my calendar right, the first Monday in February, February third, if that's what you choose, we can kick it down to February seventeenth as President's Day, so I don't know where we do that. You don't have to have a reading after you have a public hearing, so it's just an opportunity for second, second to go with the.
How many postponed to February third?
February third. If you get it on second, we'll have that, and we'll make sure that the clerk and Ms. Wagner follow up on the agenda for that date.
Mr. Chairman, is that good, February third? Is that the?
February first.
Does that work?
Yep.
Thank you.
And would you let us know so we can show up, or somebody can show up, especially Ms. Arzillo?
I'm sorry.
I'd like to go into the boardroom.
I'm sorry.
I like that, when you have this, when we set the meeting, neighborhood.
Yes, sir.
You be the point on.
Yes, sir.
Number sixteen, public comment in the second reading of ordinance two oh two five, mending Article two point one point one. Lisa, Ms. Wagner, sorry.
The intent of this ordinance is to amend Jasper County Land Development Regulations, Article two point one one, exempt subdivisions, limiting the number of parcels that can be subdivided using the state's exemptions for parcels that are five acres and greater, where each parcel but an existing road, right-of-way, or access easement that was in existence prior to January two thousand and eighteen. Currently, there is no limit on the number of parcels that can be subdivided from a single parcel of land using the state's exemption. Over the last few years, Jasper County has received several exempt subdivisions that have created anywhere from ten to twenty-six lots subdividing a hundred-plus acres with no community facilities, sidewalks, and other things that should be provided for a community. The, what's currently in the Jasper County Land Development Regulation states, Article two point one one, exempt subdivision, the division of land into parcels of five acres or more, where each parcel but some existing road, right-of-way, or access easement recorded prior to January first, two thousand and eighteen. Whereas the state's exemption states the division of land into parcels of five acres or more where no new street is involved, and plats of these exemptions must be received as information by the planning agency, which will indicate that fact on the plans. So the proposed amendment says to limit the number of parcels that can be subdivided from a single parcel of land using the state's exemption of four parcels. It also will define an existing easement, an existing street, and an existing easement, and it would read, "An exempt subdivision is one which meets one of the following definitions and are included only for the purpose of requiring notification and information to the authorized designee of the planning commission, the DSR. The DSR shall be notified by the owner about the exemption, and the plaque shall be recorded with the register of deeds identifying the exemption from the county's subdivision standards." And then number B there would be changed to say, "The division of land into parcels of five acres or more where no new street or easement is involved, provided that out of any single tract of land, parcel of lots of land existing as a distinct parcel as of July first, two thousand and twenty-four, no more than four such parcels may be created within a five-year period." And then, under item G, number six and seven, those are just two additions we'd like to include into the exempt subdivisions, and that's just for the acquisition of public land for right-of-way or drain adjustments, or, you know, any block for that purpose, and then the other ones just for any type of land that's proposed to be used as a utility operation or a right-of-way pumping station. And this is also up for public hearing, and there was notice put in the newspaper.
Is there anybody in the audience that wants to comment? Yes, get up. Name and location.
Yes, sir, I suppose where I know this was, I'm going to ask the same question. How is this going to impact a lot of the land in and around Jasper County, is heirs' property? And so how is this going to impact heirs' property when you come on? When I retired from the military and came back and tried to get some land separated, I ran into a huge roadblock because it would say, well, you, you had a cousin that bought a piece, that separated a piece of land, so you have to wait five years before you can get a piece of land separated. And now you're saying that it has to be, you can't separate it in less than five acres. Well, a lot of the heirs aren't trying to give away five acres at a time, they're trying to, you know, let, let the family move back home, and you get one acre here and one acre there, so to limit this and say five acres, like, how, how does this impact this? Ms. Wagner said a whole lot, and I didn't understand a whole lot of it. Only thing I really understood was, you're not going to be able to separate your land in, in nothing but five acre plots. So how does that impact people that have heirs' property, and now they start to come back home and try to get, try to, you know, build on family land and separate it in smaller parcels? Thank you.
That is public comment, and if you would, you could talk to the administrator, and he could explain it to you in detail, and maybe have a discussion. Anyway, is there anybody else? Going once? Going twice? Closed. Public comment's closed. We have the reading, second reading, I'd like to have a discussion, does anybody want to talk about this discussion? Saying no discussion, like to have a motion?
Make a motion that we approve the second reading of ordinance zero dash twenty twenty-five dash zero four.
Second? I hear a second. Any comment? Since we have this, Chris, Ben Gees, Councilman giving the keys, do you have any comment?
No, I'm just trying to understand the five acre thing.
Councilman Sauls?
Yeah.
No comment? Ralph?
Can, I just, Lisa, can you explain that real quick?
I can. So we have different types of subdivisions, you have an exempt subdivision, a minor subdivision, and a major subdivision. An exempt subdivision is a boundary survey of existing property, or maybe it's a land swap between you and the neighbor, where you're just going to reconfigure your parcel lines, maybe you're swapping out an acre or so. Or the state exemption is a part of that exempt subdivision that's for five acres and greater, where there's no need for a new street to be created. Under a minor subdivision, you could create up to four additional parcels of land. If you were to create a road, there are some standards you have to meet, then the fire marshal gets involved with that, make sure that that road meets that. There's no limit to that, you just have to meet your zoning district. So if it's residential, it's a half acre, 100-foot lot width, whereas if it's rural preservation, you have to have one acre, and the lot was 200 feet wide. So it's just those, each zoning designation kind of determines what those yard densities are, and then the major subdivision is anything else.
A real quick summary of this particular ordinance is, we have experienced some abuse of that privilege effect, where people are building more than the whole room can handle, and then you'll see the perpetual cycle, they'll come back in after they get in trouble with that and want you to maintain a road.
People bringing in 100 acres, making 26 lots, there's no sidewalks, there's no community facilities for them.
I just had a phone call about that this week, so.
That's exactly what we're trying to do here. This would be very helpful in kind of put us off to that.
All right, I understand, thank you.
Lisa?
Yes.
What is, Hardyville has the same zoning.
Hardyville uses the same number. I'm sorry, no, they, they allow you five lots.
And we allow?
We do four, and we did four because our minor subdivision is also four, and some of our road standards we have, like, if you have, are creating more than four lots, you have, those standards are less than if you have more lots.
And what about, what about Ridgeland? Would Ridgeland have something like this?
I'm not sure, to be honest with you, but Charleston does.
Okay.
Charleston limits theirs.
So I do have a motion on the, yes, I'll do it.
So Lisa, I, one of the last meetings we had, a gentleman come in and he was talking about a subdivision that was put in, a dirt road, and he was wanting something to be maintained there, and the complaint was, I think, what you were talking about, and I'm assuming this whole thing's about something very similar to that, where somebody comes in and builds 30 houses, sells them, but there's a dirt road out front, and who's gonna maintain the road? And so that's what we're trying to avoid. But I, but I'm also hearing the gentleman in the back that spoke about the, the other end.
So we do have one other subdivision, it's, it's a court order subdivision, which, you know, if it's a family land or heirs property, but anything that's been in court and there's a judgment order, we will abide by that judgment. So, again, what we're presenting to you tonight are only for those lots that are being used as a state's exemption, and the state requires five acres or more, where there's no need to build road. It, it's not going to affect the heirs property, and we have some provisions in our ordinance for heirs property.
I think that's all I was trying to get to, and I thank you.
Good comment? I'd like to make a motion. Oh, you have the motion.
Make a motion, second.
What?
So we have a motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any? Saying yes? Anybody opposed? Passed. Ms. Giles, your.
Yes, sir.
Considerate your approval of candidate to be appointed to by the Jasper County Council to regional housing trust oversight.
Yes, sir, this was on your, your previous meeting, to kind of prompt you to start looking for an applicant that you would like to put on there for the regional housing trust oversight board. Ms. Gaston did not seek reappointment, her term has ended as of 12/31, and we received a letter from Mr. Paulings, Executive Director of Jasper Housing Trust Authority, asking Jasper County to have an appointee for the Jasper Housing Trust. He said he would respectfully request that you designate a new representative to the oversight board at your earliest convenience to ensure uninterrupted representation and collaboration. So if you have someone that you would like to name, we can process that through the letter. If you wanna push this to the next meeting, have some kind of look for snappin'.
I have a person meeting with Mrs. Gaston to go over what was required, and if it's all good, go to the next meeting. Do I have to do a, a motion or something?
Yes, do you have a candidate?
I will have, I don't know, she's still making a decision.
Okay, we'll just try it again in your next meeting, I'll do that.
Okay, I don't have to do a, a gen, a motion, I think.
Not for this, not until you have a suitable candidate you all are agreeable to.
Okay. Ms. Giles, again, approval of the schedule of 2025 County Council's scheduled meeting dates.
Yes, sir, I had to pose a 2025 County Council schedule, so y'all made some changes to that. We were asked to remove the 5:30 executive session from the schedule, which was done. All meetings will start at 6:00 p.m. There will now be four meetings in Hardyville, and I had confirmed their dates with Hardyville, and they were very happy to accommodate us. So it will be in their chambers on March 3rd, June 2nd, September 15th, and November 17th. And we have also added June 9th and December 15th to the schedule.
Any discussion? No discussion? Like to have a motion? So moved. Second?
Second.
Any comment? All in favor? Raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
All against? Passed. Okay, approval of minutes, do I have to approve everyone? Can we do this in?
Yes, you can take them up and be aggregate if you wish, and anybody can make any amendments to any particular one who might have a change to.
We have the minutes, any discussion on minutes? I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes listed, 8:27, 24, 9:3, 24, 9:5, 24, 9:16, 24, 9:19, 24, 10:7, 24, 10:21, 24, 11:04, 24, and 11:18, 24. Like to have a motion to approve or disapprove.
Make a motion that we approve the dates the chairman kept just read out.
Second. All, any comment? All in favor? Raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Anybody against? Raise the same motion. Approve. This time comes as citizen comments. Person that was signed up was A.T. Fletcher. I think he already talked. No, anybody else would like to talk? Comments closed. The administrators report? Over.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, I provide you just a few things on the report this time. We'll follow up on Exit 3. We did receive, I think, today's draft intergovernmental agreement, so we'll be looking through and bring it to you as soon as we can, that, the additional funding. The county council strategic planning session that you all had planned for later this month, look forward to working with the chairman on that agenda. I think you'll find it good, we're gonna have a busy day, the first day, meeting a lot of different consultants and a lot of different people, and we're just excited about it. Staff is excited about to go through all our projects, we can show you what we're working on, and get your advice on some things. And finally, I just wanted to say, we do have some new department head and division director employees that we have. We have Mr. Jim Iowa-Nicki, if you haven't met him. Jim is here. Jim is a registered engineer, and he is now in charge of our engineering services division, so we look forward to working with Jim. He has a long career in the private sector and public sector. We most recently were able to successfully steal him from the town of Hilton Head Island, which we like to brag about, and we're just glad he's here, and we think he's gonna be a tremendous help as we move forward with the massive transportation sales tax project. So please welcome Jim. And, Chairman, I just wanted to make one announcement, that as of tomorrow, the new detention center director will be Mr. Donald Kim. And that concludes my report, unless, of course, you have any questions of me.
I would, I just, I guess I could do this in comm, I'll do it in comments, gentlemen.
Yes, sir.
Okay, council member comments, go by seniority. Mr. Orzillo, you're up first.
I'm up by seniority.
We're gonna give the senior then.
Oh, okay. Well, I just wanna say, my first night on the bench, thank you, and I don't know if my wife's here or not, I think she might have picked, oh, she is. And I gotta thank her, every time I endeavor something like this, Board of Election for 10 years, whatever, she's the one doing it. I mean, I'm taking the credit, and she's doing the work. Goes both ways, but I appreciate it, and I thank everyone, and look forward to working with all of you folks. I already know y'all pretty well, and I'm just excited. Thank you, and that's all.
Mr. Van Geesem?
Yeah, I just wanted to congratulate you guys, I'm glad I'm here with you guys, I think it's gonna be an exciting year, I think we're gonna do some great things for Jasper County, and I think it's gonna be really good. So, thank you all, appreciate it.
Mr. Raul?
Just a couple things. I wanna thank everyone for bringing us all here, voting us in, getting the new council sworn in tonight. We look forward to hitting the ground running and making Jasper a better, better place. I do have a couple things that would like to potentially see if our new engineering director, if we could take a look at the dump and some of the things there. I've had a lot of complaints recently with some of the recycling and the area where the swap shop is, if you could take a look into that. Also, for the administrator, if we could look at engaging in some of the shared services talks throughout, some of the vast varieties with our neighboring jurisdictions, with some of the things that we can do, this is kinda spilled over from a conversation we had with Parks and Rec the other day. And then, thirdly, Chief Wells, with the cold weather coming in, do we have any warming shelters potentially that we've partnered with that we could look into for those that are less fortunate?
So, historically, those are operated by volunteer organizations. We do not have the staffing capacity to do that. We have reached out to our partners and asked for the assistance in staffing to try and open up a couple of those shelters, and unfortunately, we're just not having the success to do that. We can continue to have those conversations. We have received word that there are warming shelters in neighboring jurisdictions, Beaufort County, and those are operated by the religious organizations. We'll be happy to publish and share those.
I do have a local church, I will get them to reach out to you all that wants to open up their facilities for that.
Good news? Thank you.
And that's all I have.
All right. Councilman Salz?
Thank you, I of course wanna congratulate Chairman Kim from Vice Chair Raul, and also welcome Councilman Orzillo and everybody else that was sworn in tonight, it's good to have you here. Just a few things, I noticed that the Jasper YMCA groundbreaking event has been postponed to January 30th, so you can adjust your calendars, that'll be an exciting day to have a YMCA in Jasper, I never thought we'd have one growing up here, so that's, that's exciting, and I know the city of Hardyville, the mayor's here, played a big role in that as well, so thank you all. Ava Duncan was employee of the month, she worked at voter registration office, so I wanna congratulate her on that. And then we had several firefighters with Jasper County Fire and Rescue, Chris Flood, Dalton Kearns promoted to master firefighter, and then Stephen Bass, Brian Allen, I mean, Brian Freeman and Alan Morrison, the senior firefighters, so congratulations to those guys as well. Last month, I took a tour with Mr. Van Geesem at the Robert Graves property down at Tecton Hall to look at his property and see what he had as far as his intentions there, and that was eye-opening as well. Worked with some citizens on Bellinger Hill Road, actually, about some no littering signage, and we're trying to get those put in place, and I wanna thank Ms. Lynn for her assistance with that. We also have some of the White family on Cherry Hill that are interested in that too, that I spoke with last week. So I guess with the amount of traffic taking the Cherry Hill detour with 462 under construction, they've seen a lot of dick in litter, especially with some trash trucks, so I'll get you in touch with some of the White family members that called me about that as well. So thank you, Lynn, we'll keep you out for people. We had our executive meeting with Southern Carolina Alliance in December, and we'll be wrapping up 2024 numbers with our projects, and we'll have that report out soon, and Taylor's here, thank you, Taylor, for what you do on that. And Tyco, if you go to tycotractors.com, they have some positions available too, they've done an expansion, as y'all saw earlier this year, and they've got some good career opportunities available for people in this area too, so thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. It's my turn. I just wanna thank the council again, getting here, I hope it's well-founded. I'm gonna make a pledge that we will be open. We've heard you, we've heard the citizens of this county, we will be open. Just remember, when we open up and we have the information flowing, it's gonna take a longer time to do it, but it's gonna be open to the public. We are gonna stop, we're gonna curtail executive session as much as we can. My feeling, and I don't know about the county council, or the council of the hall, but if it's in doubt, we go public. So, that's it. Shared services, I'd like to have the administrator, I think we should have a committee set up someplace along the line, ad hoc committee, as it says, is to start shared services. You can, we can either do it through the council, or we can have the administrator do it with staff and bring it to us, one of the two. I'm gonna direct the administrator to call Ridgeland, Hardyville, and set up a meeting for the referendum. The referendum has started, we don't get any money until May, but there's a lot of stuff we have to talk about and get some kind of consensus on what we're gonna do first, and bring it to the public again, some of your public meeting, we're gonna be very open about this. We are fortunate in getting the referendum passed. I think we were one of the first, one counties in the state that passed their referendum, because people realized we need transportation. You heard it tonight with public comment, that Levy Road is a disaster. It is, and we recognize that, because it's on the referendum. 315's on the referendum, so we recognize some of this problems, but you also did too, and that's the best part. The warming stations, I would like to, I had that on my list, I guess we're talking to each other, is can we set up something with the rec centers privately, like a church come in and do it? I don't know, that's something I would like to ask. So we have to do something. Another avenue would be fit, and I'll bring that up to them, they have a bunch of churches that they deal with, maybe we can do something there. I, personally, I, we went to Tecton Hall, did the tour of Tecton Hall, it is beautiful out there. It's amazing, tell you the truth. Got stopped a few times, but that's fine. I've been to the, I went to sheriff's department, Christmas party. I'm gonna direct, or as my term, I wanna be more inclusive with the staff. If they have a party or something, announce something, we've gotta be part of them. They come for us money, we gotta know them. I'm gonna direct the sheriff to come tell us, rather than wait till budget time, come and give us an update. Same with the school. Same with the treasurer. We can't have people coming to us asking for money when we don't know what's happening. And finally, thank you for voting for me, I appreciate it. And that's the end of the public councilmen's comments. We'll go to number 23, executive session. Do you have any comment on executive session? Discussion, shoot. I need a motion to go to executive session for the purpose, I'm sorry, I didn't read that, I'm, I'm, okay. Executive session, a public comment may hold a meeting close to public for one or more of the following reasons. One, discussion of employment appointment, compensation, promotion, demotion, discipline, or release of an employee, a student, or a person regulated by a public body, or appointment of a person to a public body. County administrator, employment agreement. County administrator, employment agreement. Discussion of negotiations incidental to proposed contract arrangements of proposed purchase or sale of property, the receipt of legal advice, where the legal advice related to pending, threatened, or potential claim or matters covered by attorney-client privilege. Settlement of legal claims or position of a public agency in the adversity situations involving assertion against the agency of a claim. Consulting agreement with Margaret Bostic, consulting agreement with Arthur Benjamin. Discussion of matters relating to the proposed location, expansion, or the provision of services encouraged, encouraging location of or expansion of industries or other businesses in the area served by the public body. Process, project, settlement. Do I have a motion to approve or disapprove?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Any comment? No comment? All people approving, will raise their hand and say aye. Aye. Anybody opposed? Same motion. Approved. I'd like to make a motion to come out of executive session.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All against? Hearing it? Passed. Do I have any motions?
Mr. Chairman, I have one. I move to authorize the county administrator contract for consulting services with Arthur Benjamin to assist the detention center administrator with transition responsibilities and duties in the detention center not to exceed a monthly amount of $5,260.80 for a period of time not to exceed 30 days.
Do I hear a motion? A second, excuse me. A second? Second. Any comment? All in favor, raise their hand and say aye.
Aye.
Any against? Do I have any other motion?
At this time, I'd like to make a motion, or I move to authorize the clerk of court to contract for consulting services with Margaret Bostic or such other person or persons with professional expertise to assist the clerk of court with the transition of responsibilities and duties in the clerk of court office not to exceed a monthly amount of $1,920 for a period of time not to exceed 30 days.
Do I have a motion?
You just made a motion.
Oh, second, excuse me, I'm sorry. All in favors, say aye.
Aye.
All against? Do I have a motion?
Yes, I have a motion. I move to authorize the county administrator to execute and deliver on behalf of Jasper County the Economic Development Closing Fund grant in the amount of $5,110,000 from the South Carolina Department of Commerce for the economic development project designated as Project Solomon, along with such other documents related thereto as may be necessary or desired to receive the funding offered.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any comment? I do have a comment, this is a, if I'm not mistaken, this is just in case, or when we do get the grant for Levy, is that correct?
No, sir, that was the earlier item we did on your regular agenda. These are grants for economic development projects.
Okay, we have, they're already approved from us, or is this something anticipated?
You're approving two economic development grants here out of executive session. In the earlier meeting, you did approve the agreement with Locog for the Levy grant.
Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Do I have any motions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, I move to authorize the county administrator to execute and deliver on behalf of Jasper County the Economic Development Set Aside Grant in the amount of $75,000 from the South Carolina Department of Commerce for S&amp;P Produce Inc., Project Veggie, along with such other documents related thereto as may be necessary or desired to receive the funding offered.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All against? I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second.
Stand up. Here you go, Wanda.